Welcome everyone to this Tuesday, May 24th, 2016, School Board Meeting of the Fairmont Area Schools. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for roll call. We have all members present. Moving on to minutes. We have minutes before you.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the school board meeting for May 10th, 2016. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have the green agenda before you. Any changes or additions?
I would make a motion to approve the agenda as offered.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. We have a motion and a second to approve the May 24th, 2016, School Board Meeting Agenda as presented. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no celebrations or community reports, so moving on to superintendent's report and calendar.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick items. First of all, we'll have just one school board meeting in June. That will be on Tuesday, June 14th. And just a quick enrollment report, we're actually up four students from where we were two weeks ago. We're now serving 1,701 students. And another point is that so far we've had three individuals file for the special election that will be held on August 9th. And we've had two men and one woman. We've had John Jabow, we've had Dell Ellis, and we've had Peggy Kim. Those three have filed paperwork. That's it.
And the last day to file is May 31st, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. For financial business, we have a donation. Dan?
All right. In Appendix A in your packet. If I can get my papers unstuck here. My papers are all stuck together. All right. I would introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, whereas Joel Hokinson has donated 225 pens valued at $225. Be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Dan?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Sue, financial reports and bills.
Tonight on the agenda, we have the approval of wire transfers from May 6th through May 19th and the payment of the May 24th bills. So if you look at your wires and transfers, that April should not have been on there, so May 6th through May 19th. The first one is rev track fees from the prior month transactions. And then we have the pathways to early learning scholarship program revenue coming in from the prior month. And then I made a pretty sizable transfer from the liquid asset fund to our local bank. We were able to come up with an agreement to have a higher interest than we're receiving at the liquid asset fund and then to have the funds local. Any questions on that? Okay, then moving to the check register data today, just a few to bring to your attention. Check number 58-430 made out to AP exams. Here we have 40 students taking 50 different AP exams. That total cost is that $4,015, but we will be reimbursed $2,065. So we're reimbursed about 51% of that.
Who reimburses us?
The state of Minnesota.
Okay.
And there is no cost to the students. Check number 58-448 made out to Higher MH. A few months ago Superintendent Brown worked with the Staff Welfare Committee on coming up with the new process for background checks. And so with this new process, this is the company that we will be paying. This process now costs $35 per employee and the district will be paying $15 of that and the new employees will be paying $20. And so this cost is for any new employee that we've had that cost share. And then also the district will be paying the full cost for all teachers that are up for tenure for that given year. And so you acted on tenure for the teacher's last, at the last board meeting. So this background check is more extensive than just checking the Minnesota BCA. It's a nationwide check. So really nationwide versus Minnesota. Any questions? Okay, check number 58-465 made out to SHI International. This is for the purchase of 346 Chromebooks for the 1617 school year. Eighty of those will be at the elementary and the balance at the high school. So they're being purchased now, so they're all ready to use right when school starts this fall. Okay, that's all I had for you. Julie and I did review things prior to the board meeting. Do you have any questions for Julie or I?
If there are no questions, I then would offer a motion to approve the wire transfers from May 6th, 2016 to May 19th, 2016, and payment of the May 24th, 2016 bills.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sue. No old business, so we'll move on to new business with Matt Mahoney and some exciting news.
Good afternoon, everyone. Kind of got some good stuff here for you guys, but I kind of want to go back and just talk real briefly about last Friday. Last Friday, we had our spring recognition where we recognized all of our seniors. And what we do is we give them a plaque. And on that plaque, they have to, they have to letter as a senior, but it has every sport, activity, band, choir, orchestra, anything that they learned in a letter in, they get a small little plaque. And it's kind of a neat deal. The kids come up on stage, I recognize them, they go back to their seat. And then we finish with a PowerPoint or we have kids give a speech, so on and so forth. Then after that, then we go and we do our community service. So kind of what I'm going to talk about here kind of really fits into what we did last Friday. And I got to be honest, you know, this is coming from Minnetonka High School. There was a principal's conference there. I want to say it was either last fall or even last summer. And it was Kim Niss and Annie Tradall, and I believe even Joe was present there. And they brought it back and we've just kind of been brainstorming forever and we thought that this would be something that we should do at Fairmont High School. And so between kind of our four brains, we've kind of modeled this so that it would fit Fairmont's style. And basically what it is, I do have three documents here, and Joe, do they have the documents? Okay. Basically, the first one kind of explains it. What it is, it's the Fairmont Area Schools varsity letter and community service. So right now, if a student wanted to go out and do community service, you know, they get the pat on the back, they get the good feel for it. This will allow them to get a varsity letter for it. On Friday, we had two students, and I want to name them specifically just because they had an unbelievable career at Fairmont, but Austin Becker received 23 letters in his time here at Fairmont and Aniga Camarogory lettered 22 times. So that's pretty amazing. And, you know, you've got your athletics that are for some people, you've got your fine arts that are for some people, you've got your band, your music, your orchestra, your choir for some people. And this gives another kid an opportunity to get a letter. Again, that plaque, you can only get that if you lettered during your senior year. But what we're going to do with this varsity letter and community service, anybody in grades, going into ninth grade, 10th, 11th, 12th is eligible for this. Kind of the basics of this is they'd have to get 100 hours of unpaid volunteer service. And it doesn't necessarily have to be in a 12-month period. It could be, you know, if they work on it over the summertime, if they work on it just during the school year, but they have to get that 100 hours. And what we're saying out of those 100 hours, that 50 of those hours kind of be from one group, whether it's the nursing home or maybe they decide to go to the elementary school and help kids read or do their homework. But we want half of those hours to be through one agency. They will also need to have a sheet like this. And basically what this is, is it's going to record all their hours. Pretty self-explanatory. They would date it, they would put where they were at, the activity that they were doing, the number of hours, and then have somebody sign off on that. So that way, it's not them just writing it all in at the last minute to do it. The other thing would be a recommendation letter. So again, let's just say that they were down at the elementary and they were working with one of our elementary teachers. And that student would just go to them at the end of the project and say, "I need a recommendation letter saying that I was doing this, I was helping mentoring these kids or reading to them," or whatever the project was. So we're looking for a recommendation letter, some type of a reflection project, whether they write themselves a letter to us, if they have a journal, any type of work that they did with those students, or if there was at a nursing home, something that they can reflect on their project and share with us. Also, some type of a picture, a digital photo of some sorts that we can see what they were doing. And then the last one, kind of the big one, students must be academically eligible and chemically free during the year to participate in this program. And kind of how it works is you kind of saw what they would record on, and then if they were going to do this, I do have like an application. So there's kind of like I said, the three pieces. The one document has a lot of the information on it. This document right here would be, they would track all their hours. And the third one would be kind of like the application for doing this, kind of with all their checklist of things that they needed to do, again, some signatures and the hours and so on and so forth. So that's kind of why I'm here today, to kind of inform you guys. We've been kind of throwing this around here the last, I don't know, three or four months, trying to kind of figure out what works best for Fairmont. I think the biggest thing right now is how do we get the word out? How do we spread this out to our students and to our parents? Obviously, coming here and speaking to you guys, we'd like the Sentinel to do a little reporting on it. But I think the big way for me to get it out will be next August 11th. And that's when we have our fall back-to-school parent sports activities meeting in the fall. And, you know, we draw a lot of people. I think we had over 400 kids out for a fall sport, so that's when I'm going to implement that to our kids. So that's kind of what I got. Questions?
Yeah, Matt, are there any organized programs at the school, you know, where kids can volunteer?
You know, off the top of my head, I really don't know. I know that there's, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but I know there's a need for some help down at the elementary school by volunteering with, you know, helping out and reading or being a tutor of some sort.
So has there been any discussion among the staff about how to try to facilitate that process, try to organize, like peer tutoring?
Yeah, you know, I don't, you wanted something to add on that?
Well, Rufus, the cabinet has met and talked about that. And the elementary is looking at having some after-school hours available for kids that need some tutoring and some one-on-one assistance, some mentoring. And the cabinet's very interested in this. I talked to Jim and Michelle, and we can just envision, you know, a group of high school students that aren't necessarily involved in athletics or the fine arts right now that would be interested in coming. And that kind of ties in with the new teacher cadet class that's going to be taught next year by Mrs. Tonder.
Yeah, I think we should also consider the same process, the same opportunity at the high school, peer tutoring, you know, at the junior and high school. I know there's a need.
One of the things too with that is-
You could earn a letter.
I've already earned my letter.
One of the things with that that we did talk about was today at our school, it was a fast day. So, you know, we had that two hours from 8:20 to 10:20 where kids were coming in. And we did talk about that this could be a good time for those people, you know, that want to get those two hours. That's an easy two hours for kids to come in and help in a math or a physics or a geometry, maybe some older kids that have gone through the system and know that subject area pretty well. So, yeah, we have had a little discussion on it.
Matt, do you know approximately what percent of our varsity, or our high school students earn a varsity letter now?
You know, at our, we had, I did the math here, we had, I think it was 972 kids that were out for a fall, winter, and a spring sport. So the percentage part of it, I don't know off the top of my head. But out of all the seniors that we graduated, it was probably, you know, 25 kids or less did not get a varsity plaque, a varsity letter. So you're looking at, you know-
25%?
Yeah, yeah, 25%, probably less than 25%, probably about 20%. So it's pretty good.
Now, Matt, when you talked, when you got this idea from the Minnetonka and the other principals, did they give any indication about what kind of participation they had in the program as far as the number of kids?
You know-
They did. We actually met with the former principal at Minnetonka, who's now the head of the Minnesota Association of Secondary Principals. And, you know, Minnetonka's a big high school. And, you know, their varsity basketball team only has 15 players. And yet there's hundreds of kids in each class. And he said, "The neat thing about this program is that in Minnetonka, it's really tough to get a varsity letter in a varsity sport because the competition is so heavy." And this allows many more of their students to earn varsity letters. And it was pretty amazing. I forgot exactly the exact percentage of kids, but it was sizable, the number of students that took advantage of this, because most kids do want to get something out of their high school, besides, in addition to a diploma. They'd like to take some momentum with them. And earning a varsity letter is very important to most of our students. And it was pretty, kind of a big deal. That's why we thought it was such a neat idea to borrow and bring down here to south central Minnesota.
I see a lot of our brilliant, resourceful students taking this and just running with it and, you know, making something big out of it. I really, you know, I see it that we have given them that opportunity to take this to help Fairmont become a much better place to be. But, you know, to do that little bit extra of the volunteering, whether it be in the churches, you know, the community Salvation Army, I mean, there's just tons of places. The hospital, the elementary school is one, yes, or the, you know, the high school. But, I mean, I see thousands of places where people can spend that time. And these kids, they're going to make some changes that we're going to be very proud of them with.
No, and that's exactly right. You know, we had our community service day just the other day, and my group, and I had ninth graders, and we went down to the Hobo Trail. And, I mean, geez, I had four or five kids that are just flat out gung ho. I mean, they said, "Do this, this, and this," and they just, they were gone. And they just did a fantastic job. And I also think our school is very competitive. And, you know, seeing that Austin got 23 and Aniga had 22 letters, I mean, you're talking kids that they would have had 27 letters, they would have had 26 letters, I think, if they would have had the opportunity to do this. So I think this is something that's neat. And I hope the kids jump on this and take advantage of it, because it's not just good for them, but it's good for our community and good for the little kids.
And it's something that they can take with them the rest of their life.
Yep.
You know, it's that investment in their community. And, you know, and besides that, it looks great on a college application.
Absolutely.
I would hope that a few of the kids that don't have the letter right now, that feel that they maybe don't have the athletic gift or whatever other opportunities to do that, they're not good musicians or whatever, you know, they would take this opportunity so that we could, you know, make that number of kids that don't have a letter even lower. That would be a great goal to have, to, I'm sure, there's some opportunity there for those kids too.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Anyone want to offer a motion for this?
I'd make a motion to approve providing volunteers with a varsity letter, beginning with the 2016-17 school year of Fairmont High School.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Julie, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Moving on to bond refunding, we have a special guest, Patty Hemanova from Springstead, to make a presentation.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Brown, it's an honor to be here tonight to share the results of your 2008A bond refunding. Last month, you did a set sale at the board. And that set sale, what it did is it authorized Springstead to move forward and solicit bids for the bonds. And also giving Andrea Headkey, that is the bond attorney, to start working on the resolutions that were required and the proper documentation to go along with these bonds. And today, at 10:30, was the closing of the bonds for the refunding. And we went out for competitive bids, and we had four bids today. And the winning bid was Robert W. Baird &amp; Company. And we estimated, when we were working on refinancing these bonds, we were looking at an interest raise of 2.69% on the refunding. It actually came in today at 2.45%. And that's a savings of over $2,045,000 to the taxpayers. And that is over 15 years. Now, what you're going to see is it's not going to take into effect this levy, it'll be the following levy next year when you approve that levy, when this will go into effect. That is a savings of over $134,000 a year for 15 years, that your taxpayers are going to see that savings. Also, there was about 20 basis points between the lowest and the highest bidder. The, as I shared, the winning bid was Robert W. Baird. They came in at 2.45%. UBS Financial Services came in at an interest rate of 2.55%. FTN Financial Capital Markets came in at 2.59%. Hutchinson Saki came in at 2.65, yeah, 2.65. So very, very close in the results today. The reason that you have such great interest rates doesn't happen just because of the day. There's a lot of things that come into play with this. First off, you have a very high credit rating. You've got a double A3 rating. As a reminder, you were upgraded last year from Moody's. And that comes into play. The higher the rating that you receive, the better interest rates that you're going to receive. And that just doesn't happen that they're all of a sudden going to upgrade you. It's a lot of effort on, as a board, being fiscally responsible for your budget, the leadership at the top by Mr. Superintendent Brown. And when we have our rating with Moody's, it's an important call. And it's about an hour-long call that takes place with the superintendent and the business manager. And they have done a phenomenal job explaining the financials of the district and also the what is happening here at the district and all the exciting things. And they're looking at that. And your financials is about 30% of your rating. About 20% has to do with your tax base of the city. And the, also, they are looking at any kind of growth. And growth, what I'm talking about is population in students and population within the community. And what they did is they did a phenomenal job explaining what's happening within the community too. And that's why you got the upgrade last year, and they maintained that, and that really helped today during the rating. What will happen then is, once the board approves the resolution, which outlines who got the winning bid, the interest rate, and that you're going to be accepting that, there also, there's terms relating to the IRS, making sure that everything is compliance with the federal and state regulations when we refinance these bonds. And then what will happen is we will close in June. Once the closing, then everything will be set. Now, when I told you that these bonds, you're not going to actually see the savings for a couple of years, it's going to sit in escrow for a couple of years, okay? And then once it rolls over, then you'll start to see the savings at that point. We will be letting the underwriter know first thing in the morning, and they have almost sold all of the bonds off. So they will be sold as early as tomorrow morning. And there are a lot of companies and banks that have already contacted Baird that they were, if they got the winning bid, that they were going to purchase some of these. So the majority of these are already going to be sold off.
Any questions? Thank you.
So a special thank you to Superintendent Brown and Sue Nelson for all of their hard work in this. It doesn't happen overnight. There's a lot of things behind the scenes that they have to be prepared for and to provide us. And we were able to get out to the market early enough because of how prepared Sue was in getting the documents back to us, and that also truly helps, so.
I'd like to thank Sue and Superintendent Brown as well for their work with this, and also like to thank the community. We can't just be an isolated school. It really, when we work with the community, it benefits all. It benefits all of our taxpayers. So a big thank you also to the community and the businesses and those that make Fairmont what it is.
One other thing that Sue asked me to bring up is, which I forgot to just right now, we refinanced your, some bonds last year. We refinanced, and of that, there were about $15 million that we sold at that point, and that was a savings of over $1.6 million last year to the taxpayers. And then in 2013, we refinanced your 2005A. Now, we only had about five years left to refinance, and that came in at about $160,000. So that was a short, but that was still over four or over 5% savings on those bonds. So this district has done a great job on refinancing these bonds and saving your taxpayers a lot of money. There is another bond that we are watching very carefully of yours to see when the opportunity is the best to refinance these. Now, state law does require, if it's a refinancing in advance like this one, you would need to save at least 3%. Well, the ones we just refinanced today, you saved over 15%. So that's what we're trying to do, is strategize to try to maximize your savings for the district. So you have done a fantastic job as a district, saving money for your taxpayers. So I wanted to make sure that I shared that. So thanks, Sue.
Patty, what have those been, the 1999 bonds that you're referring to?
The ones that we refinanced last year, that was your alt facilities, that was your 2008A. And then in, yeah, your 2008A. And then in 2013, that was refinanced, was your 2005 bonds.
Thank you. Dan?
So the language is all there in Appendix B. Let's have that here. If anyone's taken a look at that, I would make a motion to accept the winning bid of Robert W. Baird Company on the refinancing of the 2008B bonds.
I think you have to read the resolution.
Where's the resolution? The whole thing?
Well, not all of it, but a good portion.
Look at that first paragraph.
The first paragraph?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay, so the resolution relates to $11,620,000 in general obligation alternative facilities refunding bonds, Series 2016A, authorizing the issuance, awarding the sale, prescribing the form and details, and providing for the payment thereof. I would move for the preceding resolution and move for its adoption, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 2752 of the state of Minnesota, to accept the terms as stated in Appendix B.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Dan?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Patty, for your presentation. Moving on to meal prices for this year. Danielle?
Yes. Sue Nelson has been working with Chartwells on the renewal of our contract for 2016, 2017, and the meal prices for next year. Chartwells has recommended a five cent increase. In addition, the child nutrition department of Minnesota Department of Education requires school districts to use a price adjustment calculator to determine meal prices. This calculation involves entering the number of paid lunches served in October 2015 and the current cost of those lunches. The calculator then determines the weighted average, and the results of that calculation indicated we needed a five cent increase. So I make a motion to approve- So, I make a motion to approve the new meal price, which I guess for the elementary school, that would be, go up to 270, and at the high school, it'll be 280 per lunch for kids.
Thank you, Danielle. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to point out that this is something that we have to do. There's this formula that spits out the amount that we need to, we have to increase the meal price by, and it's not being done to add to our meal, our fund balance with the, with the food services. It's something that we really are required to do.
We're required, but it's also to help keep us, you know, fluent in that area as well, so, you know. And if you look at the prices really for the amount of food that students get, and even the adult price for $3.60, I mean, I've eaten at the, the school. There's, you get a good meal for that price. I, you can't eat anywhere else in town for that price. I mean, it's really a good deal, so, you know. And it's good nutritious food, following the nutritional standards that are set by our government and that. So, it's, like I said, it's a good job, good deal for our students, so.
Any other discussion?
There is a pretty big variance in the cost of meals from district to district, so that's why they have this price calculator, to try to keep everybody within a range so that there aren't any people trying to game the system as you were to, to, you know, you know, gain an advantage by charging too much or charging too little, so. So, except going along with the 5 cent increase here for now.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? Okay, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to transportation contract. Dan?
Our contract with Minnesota Motor Bus ends at the conclusion of this school year. Business manager Sue Nelson has been working with Tom Hay of Minnesota Motor Bus on extending the contract. Their proposed four-year contract, which is included in Appendix D, calls for an increase of 1.67% for the 2016-17 school year, and a 2% increase for the years 2017-18, 2018-19, and 2019-20. We've been very pleased with the service that's provided by Minnesota Motor Bus. Any issues that we've had have been taken care of in a very timely fashion, and we've had continued expansion of, they've been very cooperative with helping getting technology such as the cameras and the buses and such, too, so. The, the details, we went over at the operations meeting on the 12th.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the transportation contract with Minnesota Motor Bus as stated in Appendix D.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Dan, a second by Danielle. Any more, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Continuing with new business, Julie?
Yes. We have two agreements in place with Southern Plains Educational Co-op Cooperative, by which we provide the co-op with payroll and IT services, and we're recommending that those contracts be renewed for the 2016-17 school year. There are no changes to the enclosed agreements with regard to services and time that would be provided to the co-op, and these are in both Appendix E and Appendix F. The cost is increased based on probable contract changes that result from negotiation settlements. So, I will make a motion to approve the renewal of the following agreements with Southern Plains Educational Co-op for the 2016-17 school year, and that would include the payroll and benefit management as in Appendix E, and the technology services as in Appendix F.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Basically, it just involves how much time some of our employees work doing the payroll and such for Southern Plains.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Danielle, audit services?
Sue has been working with Clifton Larson Allen on a proposal for audit services for the 15-16 school year. They have proposed a fee of $18,900 plus expenses. This is the same as last year's fee, so there will be no cost increase. We were pleased with the services provided by them last year. So, I make a motion to approve the proposal from Clifton Larson Allen to complete the district's 2015-16 audit at a cost of $18,900 plus expenses.
Thank you, Danielle. Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. We have a motion by Danielle, second by Julie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to personnel. Rufus?
Resignation. Chris Sturdy has submitted his letter of resignation effective June 9, 2016. Chris has served as an English teacher at the high school since 2012. He also served as a varsity head boy soccer coach. I'd offer a motion to accept the resignation of Chris Sturdy, English teacher, effective June 9, 2016.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Julie. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Retirement?
Yes, we have Karen Trashinsky, who has submitted her intentions to retire. Karen is a Title I ECFE aide, and she, this would be effective May 27, 2016, and she has served the district since 1989. So, great, many years that she's given to our kids. So, I would make a motion to approve the retirement of Karen Trashinsky, Title I aide, effective May 27, 2016.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Julie, second by Danielle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Rufus, employment?
Three applications were received for the position of Director of Building and Grounds, and all candidates were interviewed. The interview committee is recommending that Tyler Garrison be hired for the position. Tyler has served as a maintenance employee in our district since 1994. He holds a degree in carpentry from, from Jackson Motec and has worked as a carpenter for Woodworks Carpentry and Hersky Construction. I'd offer a motion to approve the employment of Tyler Garrison as the Director of Building and Grounds, effective July 1, 2016, at a salary of Step 7.
Thank you, Rufus. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Rufus, second by Dan. Any discussion?
And Tyler will be working with Dave Turnberg until Dave gets his retirement date, so he'll be ready to hit the ground running on day one.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Rufus?
Another employment. Superintendent Brown has recommended the employment of Mackenzie Geiger as the elementary librarian, effective June 30, 2016, at a salary of BA Step 1. I don't recall what, where she comes from.
She is actually the children's librarian right now at the Martin County Library. And in the reference, and we just added this a few hours ago, but she holds a degree in human life and child development. She has four years' experience working as a home visitor with Head Start. And as I mentioned, she worked for the past year at Martin County Library as the children's librarian. She's actually coming in tomorrow to shadow Caitlin around, and I think she'll be, she's actually been the individual who's been coming into the school, too, to promote the Martin County Library to the elementary students. So, she has a nice connection. Two of her children are in our school system, and she has a youngster that's not quite schooling.
We did discuss this at staff welfare. We're going to approve some contract changes. We're going to increase the number of days for Holly Christian from 10 to 20 days. This additional time will be used to provide technology training to current and new staff during the summer months, and this has a cost of about $3,700. And then Jenny Schwiger, staff welfare has reviewed and approved that, to increase the number of extended contract days for Jenny Schwiger, high school counselor, from 15 to 20 days. So, this would be, bring her up to the same amount that Scott Gertis has at this current time. And these days are used to register students in the summer and develop the high school master schedule, and that additional cost is about $2,200. So, I would make, excuse me, make a motion to approve the following contract changes for the 2016-17 school year, extending the contract for Holly Christians by 10 days, and extending the contract for Jenny Schwiger by five days.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rufus. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to board committee reports. Operations Committee meeting. Dan?
Operations Committee met on the 12th of May, and we were able to get through quite a bit of material. We looked at the rental fee schedule for all the district facilities, which we do every year, and we recommended no change for the 2016-17 school year. We also looked at activity participation fees, and we do that every year as well, and we also recommended no changes for the amount of, the fee that parents pay for their kids to do various athletics and extracurricular activities. We had a discussion on admission fees for events for 2016-17. We had some input from Matt Mahoney about what other schools in the Big South Conference car charge, and what sports that they charge for, because some do not charge for softball, baseball, or track meets. 10 schools charge for track, five schools charge for baseball, four schools charge for softball. We also looked at the cost of season passes, and if those should be changed or not. We have not made a final determination or recommendation, so we'll revisit that about the passes and such, I think, in the future. The meal prices that we went over here in the meeting tonight, final review of the Chartwells renewal for the food service contract, the transportation contract that we approved here tonight. Sue Nelson briefed us on negotiations with Bank Midwest of Fairmont on perhaps earning some additional interest on local investments. The proposed payroll and benefit management services that were in our agenda tonight for Southern Plains that we approved, the auditing services. And then, we had a discussion at the end of the meeting about the referendum renewal, the learning levy renewal, which would be coming up in 2017, I believe, is when the current levy expires, the one that expires after five years. So, just had some preliminary discussions about what that might look at, like.
Thank you. Any questions for Dan or anyone else on the operations committee? Okay, thank you. Julie?
Yes, the custodial maintenance personnel negotiations, we met for our first meeting, so it was just kind of just getting everything out there, going over some language items. We had gone through the contracts for the ASAs and kind of did the same thing for the CMPs, and we presented that to them. They did not have all the negotiators available that night, and so we just presented some information, and, you know, they're going to meet yet to do the base contract and, you know, the base amounts and that. And then, we'll have our second meeting coming up here. We don't have one scheduled, but there'll be another one coming up, and then we'll have more information then for that. And then, negotiations, we do meet again then for the ASAs, the Secretarial Association. Our next meeting for that will be on Tuesday, May 31st, so.
Thank you, Julie. Rufus, staff welfare committee?
Staff welfare met last Wednesday afternoon. A number invited upon the agenda. Many have already been discussed tonight, the varsity letter for volunteering, contract extensions for Jenny Schwiger and Holly Christian, employment of Tyler Garrison, resignations, approve the revised school calendar, approved the recommendation to move forward and advertise for full-time family and consumer science teacher that would be shared between Fairmont and Greena Huntley. Both schools currently have a need for a .4 FTE teacher in that position, and it's difficult to recruit to that, that .4 position, so we're hoping to share a, a staff person. Language arts curriculum, we'll get a boost. We have, the district has $50,000 that's been allocated previously for, for new math curriculum for the 2017-18 school year. That will be used for our language arts curriculum for the 7th through 9th grade. The language arts teachers will review this curriculum during the inclement weather makeup days in June to decide whether to implement the new curriculum during, during next year.
And part of the reasoning behind that was because the states cycle to update the standards. I mean, for math, we would buy a new curriculum, and then in, was it two years later, the state standards might change, and so we want to make sure that we have those, we buy, purchase a curriculum that meets the state's standards.
Yeah, that's key to the, the standards.
Well, then, we're not doing it twice, you know, so, yeah.
And then, Superintendent Brown shared with us a receipt of a $50,000 grant, which she was able to, or...
We're not going to talk about that yet tonight. The, the company is going to be announcing that.
Oh, that's right. That's a secret.
That's a secret.
[laughing]. She'll have been in black.
Sorry.
And then, we concluded with a discussion about moving forward with some discussions with the school administration, and eventually with the teaching staff, to, to try to find out what, how the school board can help work together with administration and teaching, the teaching staff, to strengthen the curriculum, you know, across the board, science, math, English. And so, you know, the staff welfare committee and the rest of the board is anxious to begin that dialogue. And that was it.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay. Julie, Southern Plains Education Board meeting?
Yes. The Southern Plains Education Cooperative met last night. We meet in the office down the street here a little bit. All members were present. We received a director's report. Couple things in that director's report is the new process they're using for staff training. With the future seeing that there's not as many eligible, or I don't know how to say this right, but there's just not as many teachers graduating with, you know, the degrees that we need, that are required, with the special ed especially. We're getting in more people that are coming on board with, as a community expert, or kind of bringing them in and kind of doing like what we're doing with some of our staff, is helping them along to get that certification or the education that they need, to get that licensure in place. And so, that's part of that training program, is getting those people up to speed and helping them along, you know, giving them some, just some, people to help them along and give them some advice and lead them through the whole year and that. Also gave a report, Dr., our director Middlestat gave a report on the hiring, where we're at with that, for several positions that are still yet to be hired for next fall. We're still not out of time, but with the shortage of those people that we need, we are seeing that, you know, the need, that we need to be looking diligently for good people to take those places and that. There was a facilities update with Winnebago schools, with the ALC, and all the, the programs moving into that Winnebago site. It's been excellent for the staff. It's been excellent for the students to be all housed in one building. With that, we did know that it was an older building when we moved everybody over there, and so we're now starting to see some of those things, after being in there a year now, to see some things that need to have some attention and, and how to make those changes and that. So, there was a presentation on a statement of repair for that Winnebago site. Also, we had a report that this is the year to be doing negotiations. Superintendent Brown has volunteered for that, and thankfully, because he's on there, I can't do it, so that's fine with me, but we have another member, Wendy Russenberger, I believe, from Martin County West, volunteered to do that position, so. And let's see here. Resignations, like I said, there's just continually paraprofessionals resigning and just having different... just having different opportunities that they are going with. With that, some autism teachers, the ECSC teacher at Blue Earth has tendered a resignation, a paraprofessional at the Fairmont Elementary School, just to make a note, Cindy Wallace is the one who was in that position, and she'd served many, many years in that role, so, and that'll be coming. And then hiring, we always have the resignations, we also have hirings, we have a couple of special ed teachers, we've got a school social worker, Abby Enzru has taken that as a community expert, a language facilitator, Daisy Johnson, that'll be starting with us, and a couple other special education teachers that are hired there. With the end of the year, we always got to review the calendar to get our days all in so we can get our state funding in line, and that's, we did approve the, adopted or changed calendar for that. We approved an agreement with Charisma Counseling to provide services within our Winnebago site. We approved the payroll and benefits agreement for Southern Plains, the same thing that we approved here in our board tonight. We approved an instructional staff sharing agreement with Minnesota Valley Education District, and that was just to make good use of some of our staff kind of sharing between to provide a need somewheres else. Appointing Dawn Becker as identified official with authority, so she has that access that she needs. Approval for signatures on the school board checks, and access to bank accounts was also approved, so, pretty full meeting, but lots of information, and now we'll be meeting again now in June, and then we'll not meet again then till the fall, so it kind of gives us a few months here to work on that fall startup of the school year, so.
Thank you, Julie. Any questions for Julie? Sounds like they've covered a lot.
We do. We do. You know, you cover a lot in an hour, hour and a half, I think it was, you know, and then I didn't mention then either, we did have a guest presentator. I was a little bit late, I missed the name. I know who it is, but I just, Melinda Chambers. I know who she is, but I just could not think of her name, but she, she is a person who gave, gave her opinion or her perspective. She was hired as in the district, she had worked as a paraprofessional for years, she had worked as a counselor in, oh, what is it called, down in, outside of Estreville?
Forest Ridge.
Forest Ridge, thank you. Yes, that's what it is. I knew it was Ridge something, but I couldn't think of what. But anyway, she had worked there for years, and started to start to work with the Southern Plains Education. She was given the opportunity, some kind of, you know, encouragement to try it, and she started, and she just, I could not believe how much, you could really hear the passion in her voice, how much she really enjoyed, and she was just, you know, and I think that's where we see a lot of these people who we have hired as community experts and that, they don't even realize what they have, but then they, now she's going through the process to get that licensure and get that education to meet those needs, and it's just, it's just very rewarding to hear her and hear others as they, you know, tell about their experiences, but also tell about how it helps them to feel better about the job that they do, too. But, oh, she was just wonderful to listen to last night, so, anyway.
Thank you, Julie.
A little extra, I mean, I could talk and talk, but I'll let you go, so.
Any other business? Just a reminder again, it's already been mentioned, but the last date of file for, to run for school board is May thirty-first. Come down to the business office, and Judy will help you out. Softball, is it section right now?
Yes.
Section is right now, so, if you have, would like to, it should be exciting, stop on by at the high school.
I thought maybe you'd have it keyed into your phone or something, that you could be watching that score.
I don't, I don't. It's off.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Dan, a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting at five fifty-four PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Good job, board.